Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hey everybody. We're so glad you're here today.
We also have the incredible Julie here from our team. What's up Julie?
Hello.
Excited to have you here and we have Jen from Modern Companion with us. Hi.
Hi, good morning.
We're so thrilled to have you here today and for everyone who's tuning in live, we are so excited to see you coming over into the chat and tell us where you're coming in from. We're excited to have you here today. We've got a lot to get into. And including and starting out with a a show and tell of some really great done-for-you content to use in your Get Oiling system. So what's up everybody? Oklahoma, Michigan, Vermont, Oklahoma City, Illinois, Connecticut. It's raining in New York City too, Deb. Germany, we've got New York, Kansas City, and of course here on the call, we have Fargo. We have Florida and Jen, you're in Alabama, right?
That's right. Your homeland.
Yes, my, my homeland.
I'm like, she might not like me calling it that.
I don't know. It's, I'm from there. The accent comes out sometimes. Awesome. Well, we're thrilled to have everybody here today. Tell you what, you guys, we're going to get into some slides here at the front because there's a couple of things that I want to show you and make sure that you see. And then we're going to get into a little conversation with our friend Jen to talk about how you can take care of your young living customers on a monthly basis without having to do all the work yourself. So if we could go ahead, team here and turn off our videos so that we've got great slide quality. We will turn that back on and hang out with everybody once we get out of our share. So let's get into it, you guys. First and foremost, what we're talking about here today are done-for-you gorgeous pieces of content that you can have in your Get Oiling account for engagement and education of your people. So what we're doing today is that we're going to meet Jen from Modern Companion where we're going to talk about done-for-you content that she has ready for you to plug straight into your Good Oiling account. That includes email and text campaigns, Instagram stories, Young Living stock photos, and even vault content. If you want stuff to go into your Get Oiling vault, you're going to be able to get that from Jen. And of course, she has training and support to help you put it to use in the best way possible. We do also have several live work reviews scheduled today. So if you're here for that, keep an eye out for the half hour mark here on the call and we're going to get started working with you. And then of course, as always, we have live help and Q and A. This is a session that is designed to help you grow your young living business and to get the most out of your Good Oiling membership. So if you have questions, if you're here in need of help and support today, our team is here for you. Head over to the Q and A and add your questions. And if you have questions for Jen, make sure that you specify that you have a question for Jen or about Modern Companion as well. So we can make sure that we get all of those answered appropriately. If you would like to join us on a future live call and you're watching this as a recording, you can go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession where you can get access to all of the reminders for these calls as well as replays. And you'll be the first to know about what we'll be talking about weekly. If you want help on a live call, like two people will be receiving in dedicated screen sharing hands-on fashion today. You can go to getoiling.com/web site review, even if you don't need help with your website per se, and you just feel like you need some hands-on help. This is for you. You will work together with me or with our team on the second half of our live call every Thursday at noon. So you can just go over here, let us know what you want to work on, sign up for a call and we can work with you live. All right. So what I want to point your attention to first, you guys, is moderncompanioncampaigns.com. It looks like a lot, probably should have capitalized the first letters. It is modern companion campaigns.com. Put that into your browser because that's what we're talking about here today. This is Jen Blumberg and she is the creator of Modern Companion. And she has created gorgeous content that plugs straight into your Get Oiling system. She is a content partner of Get Oiling and has been for some time. And today we're going to learn about some of the awesome stuff that she's been working on. And of course, you're going to learn how you can get access and she even has a special code to share with you. So stay tuned for that. We're going to be sharing that at the close here before we start working with our our members who are here on the call who signed up for a call today. So moderncompanioncampaigns.com. Now, when you go there, you're going to see you have a few options. I want to share with you our recommendations from our team here at Get Oiling. There are two recommendations that we have. You can get either, you could get both, but this is the one we believe everyone needs to have. And that is called the Classic Collection. It's got guides and training on how to use Jen's content with your Good Oiling system. You're going to find a trove of seasonal email and text campaigns, stuff that's gorgeous, that's pre-written, that's well-written and is ready to go that you can use for yourself. And you'll see that there's actually stuff that goes back. It's not just this month, but if you are preparing, maybe you're working ahead and trying to make sure that you've got content ready for March, April, May, June, right? You've got loads of stuff to work with here. That is already made, beautifully done. The graphics are already done. It's really awesome. You also have Start Here bundles for text and emails. So if you're getting someone started, you don't know what to say, you don't know what to send, you've got options that she's got a 12-week fast start series. She's got tours of premium starter kits, check-in messages for members, notes to share and more. And also she's got monthly saved replies that you can use for your monthly newsletters. If you're sending out first of the month, you've also got a weekly themed drip campaign for the whole month. You're going to send out one email automatically per month or per week for the month. That's going to follow a theme that Jen has set and created content for. You'll see some examples of that here in just a second. She also has, again, a trove of gorgeous Young Living product stock photos that you can incorporate into whatever it is that you need. If you're going to be promoting something to your customers via a newsletter or if you want to be putting things into your vault, however you want to use them. And then of course, you've got, once a month, she's got a beautifully curated Instagram story ready for you to share. So this is something that you could put into your social media, of course, because it's designed for Instagram. But guys, this is content. All content is repurposable, right? You can take this stuff and spin it into all kinds of awesome creative directions. So you've not only got things that are figured out for you, but you have got a fantastic starting point to build out your content strategy into this new year. So just to show you a few awesome emails that go out. This is from her January Weekly Tips Campaign. You've got Wellness Box Inspiration. You've got an invitation to a deep dive, which you'll see a little bit more of in a second. She's got a perfect pairing theme where we talk about how we can expand what we use by putting products together. And then of course, sometimes, you know, in this case, she's got Valentine's coming up where we're talking about the end of January where this is sending out. We've got different ideas for Valentine's Day for different members of the family. And of course, this will look like it's sent straight from you, which is pretty awesome. She's also got deep dives. So for January, we're doing digestive reset, which is really cool. So we're sharing tips that, you know, may be oily, obviously in most cases they are, but in some cases there aren't. They're just generally supportive of wellness. But then here we also do have things like Young Living product recommendations, which of course, these emails are written for your customers with your customers in mind and sort of showing them new ways to engage with product and add more things to their monthly order. These things that I'm showing you, they're just that send us email. They also send us texts and they look really good. I think they were probably designed as texts in the first place, right Jen? Because you're, like, you're pretty texty in what you do.
Yes, that's right. I started, I started my Get Oiling content as all text marketing. But then I had a lot of Get Oiling friends just knocking on my door saying, can we get this on email and get it in the vaults? And you know, so I'm just like, yes, yes.
Awesome. Yeah, I want to get into more of that story so that everybody can get to know you more here in just a second. But I want to really quickly, I want to also point you guys, because this is just for Get Oiling, okay? The Diamond Collection, this is cool and it is constantly expanding what this is. And this is an option that you can add on to your membership if you decide to go with Modern Companion as your, as your content provider for your Good Oiling system. She's got done-for-you Good Oiling pages and these plug straight into your Good Oiling vault or you could use them on your Good Oiling website. And there is a whole stash of them already and she's putting new content out monthly. So we'll be able to kind of show and tell some examples of those if you want to see a little bit of it. One in particular that I really love is, you know, giving you ideas on using up your oils, right? Like revisiting oils that you haven't used in a while, right? So let's learn more and take a look. First, Jen, why don't you let us know? Because, you know, obviously for folks who don't know you yet, can you tell us a little bit about, you know, what got you to Young Living in the first place and then what got you into making content and creating Modern Companion?
Absolutely. I would love to. And thank you for putting all that together, by the way. It was a real treat for me from, from my side to see someone else kind of lay out, layout some of my content visuals and walk through. And that was, that was really great. So yes, I started, let's see, I found Young Living right after becoming a first-time mom. My oldest son, he will be turning 10 later this year. So it's been, it's been quite, quite a decade. But about 15 years ago was really when my natural wellness journey started. And, you know, just learning about just clean nutrition, clean products, just kind of one thing, you know, just getting into things, diving in deeper. And by the time I started hearing about, you know, well, hearing about essential oils a little bit, it was just doing those new motherhood things of, you know, DIY things, you know, thrifty things at home. And anyway, so a friend, a friend from church, she said, oh, you know, here's, here's some samples and here's the whole thing. And I didn't know what, what she was handing me or, you know, I was shocked that someone even knew what I was talking about. When I said, oh, I'm looking for some essential oils, because I had just grabbed some things that did not work from, from Whole Foods. But anyways, one thing led, came to the next and my son was born in September. And I think that in March, my team hit executive and then silver shortly after. And one of the things that as my team was growing quickly in those first, first few years that I, that I found that I just loved was, you know, I saw all this, this diverse group of people coming together. Because it's like, I have, you know, I have my own self and my way of doing things, but I see this team and this community that's forming and their referrals who are getting on board. A lot of different personality types, a lot of different personality styles, needs. Some people would say, oh my gosh, I love, I love how you wrote this or how you did this or how you put this class together or certain little things. But I just don't know what to say. I don't know if I could say that. And so I really quickly just clung to the, the opportunity that we have within Young Living to, to lead others and to just empower them. Whether it's giving them just like some ideas for verbiage they can use for, for sharing what they love or putting, putting classes together for, for my team and cross-line team who I was working for and all of that. But I'm just being able to find that, that other way of, I mean, everything we do is empowering in Young Living and is, is leadership in Young Living. I love that. But just finding that, that little extra way to, to help others with, with digital, with digital resources, with graphics, with just some, some, some verbiage, just writing out the whole thing. I started doing that for, for my team and some cross-line teams early on. And so I, once I kind of found an opportunity to, to really help more Team Young Living and just get more of what I was kind of already doing and just say, I want to, I really want to help more people with this. That was about three, going on three and a half years ago through Modern Companion. And so that's been just a really sweet way to take what I love about Young Living and that what I've been ingrained in through Young Living all along. But be able to, you know, just serve Team Young Living as a whole with that. Well, not as a whole, I don't serve. Not everybody, but for those, for those who, you know, need and want that, that type of service, that's been really great to be able to do both alongside each other. And I've done both my Young Living business and, you know, in Modern Companion this entire time since, since starting. And so that's, that's my story in a nutshell, I guess.
I love it. I love it. So there's been a couple of questions that have come through. And I, I think that this is going to be an important sort of distinction here. We do have, we have a few content partners. If you go to our, our content partners page on our Get Oiling website, you can learn about everyone who's there. The important thing that you need to know, you guys, is currently Jen is the only person that's doing fresh monthly content that plugs into your Get Oiling system. Meaning like if you want something for February, like February 2023, Jen's the person who has it. Right? There's a lot of great content. We have a lot of content partners who do, do different and awesome things. But a really specific and important distinction is if you're looking for, what am I sending on the first of the month? And it's figured out already. If you're looking for, you know, what am I sending this month, this upcoming month? That's there, right? It's there. It's done. And it's, and it's timed very, very specifically, right? So we're talking, it's, it literally says when you're logged into your Modern Companion content, it says January 2023, right? Now, could you again play it ahead and use like last March's content for March of 2023? Sure. You know, you're not going to send the same first of the month email. Obviously, you're going to want to get that from Jen because she's going to be including, you know, links to the gift with purchase page and talking a little bit about the content that's there. Their first of the month stuff. So that's an important thing. And if you guys use Modern Companion, definitely leave a comment here in the chat. So folks know sort of what you love about it. Jenny says the great thing about the way Jen does the deep dives. So like that digestive reset one that I showed in the slides here, the great thing about the way Jen does the deep dives is that you don't have to use them that month. You can save them for the right time to use for your team or for your prospects. That is awesome. Real quick, I want to show you guys, let's do a quick little show and tell here of some of the pages that Jen has that are created. And this is just a couple of them that can go straight into your Good Oiling vault. So this is the one I was talking about, this Oil Stash Revival. These are designed to go into your vault, but you could definitely use these on your website if you want to by any means. So this is the Oil Stash Revival. And you know, the whole idea here is to, and this is for a customer, obviously. A lot of the stuff is, most of your content, you would say probably is, is generally customer-forward, right?
Yes, the, so my Instagram stories, I always keep prospecting really heavily in mind for Instagram stories. Because it's just like a little, little prospecting playground that way. But aside from Instagram stories, it's definitely mostly, a lot of it's very versatile and it's not worded with the term customer in there, but most of it is customer-based.
And there's sort of a complete system here, if you think about it, right? So you have in your, in that, the, the main plan, right? The, what is this one called? Forgive me. The Classic Collection. You've got your Instagram stories in there. So when people reach out and they're curious, you have notes also, right? So if you want notes on, yeah, and ditching and switching. If you want notes on Ningxia, if you want notes on thieves, Jen has those. They're, they're ready to go and you could just send them to someone, say, hey, what's your email? Or you copy and paste or whatever, and you can actually share those notes. And then of course, when they get started, you've got the campaigns that are already ready. So you can get your new person started. It's all written out for you. You don't have to worry about what to say. And then again, keeping in touch with them on a monthly basis. She's got the check-ins, like the things that you would just say to somebody. It's already written. You don't have to know what to say. So it's, it's kind of the full scope, the full picture. Deb, they can be modified. You're claiming these as Good Oiling resource bundles. So if you're wanting to make it your own, that's definitely something you could do. Let's look at another one. This was a launch from a couple of months ago, I think.
Yeah.
Awesome. So it's a great way to spotlight. These pages are a great way to spotlight new stuff. So here's, you know, this is also a new one from over the holidays. So lots of just stuff that you can plug in and keep your people engaged. Anytime you have new content, you could be popping that into your member area and that's a reason to reach out. It's a reason to say, hey, if I put something in here, it might help you, right? And to keep that conversation going. So can we, Jen, can we talk a little bit about, I know I've got the workbook PDF kind of pulled up here, but I don't know. Is there anything in particular that you would love to kind of share and let people know and see about what you're doing with Modern Companion?
Yeah, absolutely. So what, what Coach Ashley is referring to is a workbook. So I've been doing Modern Companion for about three, gone on three and a half years now. And, you know, part of the, part of the fun, but sometimes the challenge, but usually, which I'd like to look at as fun, is, you know, being a Young Living brand partner who's like in the trenches right there alongside you, right there alongside Young Living. And going through things and just being able to be right there, just learning and just watching and experiencing like, what are our needs? What are the market, you know, trends, what's going on, like really in the, in the trenches with Young Living? And so as, as I'm right there in the trenches with you guys, you know, I don't really just have this set, this set play that I run without thinking about and just saying, hey, this is how I'm going to do it and it's set. But I'm always wanting to tweak and evolve and enhance how, how we offer our content. And so one thing with this February workbook that Coach Ashley was just referring to, I'm now releasing all of, all of our content, the previous month. So Ashley, you just mentioned like, hey, it's great. You could go into multiple things. And, but you can also know that it's fresh content coming out regularly. So no, I'm sorry. I told, I told Ashley, Greg, you guys, I said, I might have some. Can you guys hear me okay or should I relocate?
It is kind of interfering with the sound of, of you talking. Sorry. So what, let's go ahead and just take a quick scroll through here and
This should be a little bit better in here. Tell me if it's not.
It is, it is. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Might, might be a little darker. I apologize for that, you guys. So, so what I'm doing now, when you join Modern Companion, you do get, Ashley mentioned, there's a, there's a trove of content ready to go. And yes, absolutely. Thank, thank you so much. It sounds weird now. Okay. I apologize, you guys. So there is content you can grab that you can plug and play and whatever you are ready to. But also there is content coming out every single month that's fresh. And so one thing I'm committed to doing this year that's brand new, I'm just really excited about, is giving you the entire month's worth in advance and packaging it together. Ashley is just showing you through our upcoming February content. This is actually content that I'm releasing tomorrow. Nobody has seen it yet. But I am wanting to make sure that anybody who joins, because I have people, you guys, who have been using my content for years, but they'll say, oh, but I haven't actually, I've been, I've been in the community for, for years, but I haven't used it in six months. Or they have, you know, people, we always have to kind of reorient ourselves and that goes with, that goes with every system we have or every, you know, time there's a new website release or whatever, you have to reorient yourself. So I wanted to give this monthly bundle all together with, with like written tutorials, little explanations. It's going to say, here's the Instagram stories out of look. This is kind of why I put them together this way for this month. Here's the tips. This is what the tips are about. It's just a great visual, kind of brief compilation that I'm going to be offering every month, but in advance. And so that's something else that's new. Sometimes I do have people who say, oh, I used your content a year ago and then I stopped because I couldn't really use it, but now I'm back. And, and where are you at? So I'm hoping that this will always be a great way going forward to just really orient or reorient anybody at any given time. If you'd used my content in the past, this is going to show you very clearly that it's very different and that's, that's really had just an amazing glow up, that there's a ton more offered than, than I was able to offer when I first started. You know, sometimes, here, now I can see myself. So sometimes, so anyways, all right, let me go, I'm losing my train of thought here as I see that like half my body was on the camera. Anyway, so as far as content being released monthly going forward, I'm releasing it all at once, hoping that that will allow people to, to plan that, that, that much more thoroughly going forward, which will save them time and effort. You can literally grab your entire month's of content and sit down. If it takes you 10 minutes or it takes you an hour, everyone's going to be a little different, but you can just plug it in and have it ready to go. And so that's just a really, a really great new fun aspect of something that if you were coming into Modern Campaign just today on, as day one, it's going to be, it's going to be like a million times more efficient. So then also we do have my past archives that you can go and grab from. I will say just full disclosure that we are cleaning up some of those and we have been working on that for about the past six weeks, just kind of slowly tweaking. Because sometimes, you know, as things get updated in Young Living, it's like, well, we don't say essential awards anymore. We don't say subscribe to save anymore. So sometimes I'm just going through and just removing things or taking it down temporarily or updating it just to keep things up to date. Other times it just might be for various reasons, but currently there's a ton of stuff that you can grab in the content archives. And, you know, what I've found as a Young Living content creator for other people in the Young Living business, it's like, you know, you have so much to think about just to be in tune with your own business. And I love that. This is just something that you can delegate to me, having the design, the copy, the strategy done. Because, you know, you know, your business, you know, like what your team needs, you know, in February most or in March most or what y'all did last year. You know, if you're brand new to Modern Companion and you didn't do my, you know, the spring cleaning thing that I released like the previous, previous year or whatever it was, then maybe you did something totally different and you know best for you, what you can look at for my collection of content to pull forward. And so there's always, there's always plenty of work for you to do on your business. So having, being able to have the, the design and the, the design of the content delegated to me is something that I'm just really honored to be able to take that off the plates of Young Living brand partners and to be able to just help them just pick and choose what and when they need to. There was one other thing you said, Ashley, that made me think of, oh, you, when you were mentioning having content in the pipeline, like, yes, it's going to be fresh content every month. This is just kind of like a personal, a personal note or thought on that. But something I've observed in myself over time, and this is definitely kind of showed up in my Young Living business. It's like, sometimes you don't want to even, or you're, sometimes you have that reservation or hesitancy to even commit to doing something like, oh, I'm, I want to start using the text feature of my Get Oiling, Get Oiling. I know I have it. I pay for it. I want to use it. But like, just the idea of having to keep it going and like, okay, can I manage this new thing? If I reach out to my people and say, hey, I'm going to be here, am I really going to be there? Like, so sometimes that holds us back. And so I think that having that ongoing fresh content, especially when it comes to checking in and to like our, like my week column from us, like our weekly tips campaigns. It's just, you know, you set it up at the top of the month and then it checks in for you and gives them just little nuggets, little wellness nuggets throughout the month. You know, having that done and knowing that you can say yes now in January to texting or to getting your email going or getting your vault, you know, or your website built up or whatever. And you know that, he's like, okay, I'm committing to the system and it's going to be there in February and March and April. And it's not going to just be, you know, it's not going to be something that I commit to, but then let myself down or let other people down and then all of a sudden have to scramble. So I love, you know, I love, I love grabbing like a big content bundle as much as anyone or just having archives to pick and choose from, but just having that fresh, ongoing monthly factor for me, that's just, it's super helpful. So I love being able to offer that.
Awesome. We have some questions here. I want to kind of go through and do make sure you guys that you're putting those into the Q and A so that we don't miss them. So we are talking about promos as well. So you do have, so there's, there is one that I've seen and definitely clarify if I'm wrong about this, of course. But I've seen there's, you have a saved reply for the monthly promo, right? And so that's going to have sort of a quick rundown of the stuff that's being offered. But most importantly, it's got a link there that goes to the gift with purchase page where all the information is, right?
Exactly. Yes. And so I'm actually, my people in the Modern Companion community, they know this. I'm kind of in real time, just really, we are kind of trying to reimagine a little bit the best way to use that monthly promo or that top of the month check-in with individuals. I know you've been talking about just the benefit of, not just the benefit of, but like how to do, you know, DIY newsletter. I've been, I've been moving my email version of that monthly promo into being more like a little micro mini newsletter. So I did newsletters for Get Oiling about, for my, for my Get Oiling customers about a year and a half to two years ago. But I don't think the demand for it then was quite the same as it is now. And I kind of just let it go. If I just, you know, I didn't, we just, it just kind of came and went, but I'm getting back more to doing the monthly promo for the email. For, you know, I do text content for those two texts, but for the email, the email friends, getting it to be more like a little mini, a mini newsletter. But I love that, you know, you can always add more to it. So it's like, even if like the bones to that promo message are there and you have it formatted to where it could be like a mini newsletter, you can always add in a little blurb and a graphic about here's my local events or here's my personal stuff, or here's a link to my, my things. And so I don't know if I just answered your question, if I just totally said the word email and I'm going to go over here.
Girl, I'm the same way. So, so, so basically, if you, if you followed, you guys, if you followed the training that I did a couple of weeks ago on DIYing your monthly newsletter, this is like what Jen's going to have for you as her saved reply is the perfect starting point. So you have that. And then if you have those sort of modular templates, like she just mentioned, like the invitation to your vault or the, you know, or here's the live upcoming events, like you can use this as a thing to build off of if you want to, or you could just send it as is, but it does include the monthly verbiage. Now, following that question. following that question, how far ahead of the next month does your content come out? So obviously with the PV promos, like that, that saved reply, that's not gonna be updated until like right before it's time to send it, right?
Right. So the, the one thing, yes, so that has kind of always been, until I, until I come up with a solution for this, I was just asking the other, I was like, does anyone have this information that I can get in advance? Because I'm just, you know, a brand partner like everyone else as far as getting, getting that information. And so that, that top of the month promo message, or you know, mini newsletter for news, for your email, that is gonna be right there, you know, the first, you know, couple of days of the month released from me. So for the past three years, I, what I have done is what, a little different than what I'm doing now. So I, I say that just because I have some, I'm seeing some of my sweet, some of my sweet Modern Companion members in here, and I don't want to confuse anybody if they, they don't know about this. But in the past, we have always dripped content to you throughout the month. Like, hey, you know, here's your promo. A few days later, hey, here's your tip campaign. Go ahead and put that in. And then maybe a couple of weeks later, here's your notes. What we call notes are basically a class. It's like a, just a whole campaign of information. And maybe it's on like the digestive reset. Someone might call that a a text class or an email class or an Instagram story class that I, we call it notes in Modern Campaign. So what I have done, I've always, you know, throughout the month, I just drip content in real time. This has been for that, for that intended, intended on my side for you to use it in that specific month. Kind of like grab it and use it, grab it and use it. And that has been what we have always done in the past, the past three years. That's always worked well for everyone. But as things has, as things have evolved, and I've heard certain, I've heard certain feedback or certain challenges or struggles that some brand partners have, such as just wanting just things to be just super simplified, just even more efficient, just maybe, you know, you know, all that. I have decided to bundle it to where I give it to you at once. And so now I think you were asking me, were you asking me about like just the flow of like the campaigns versus the notes?
Right. Like when, like how far in advance? So if we're in January right now, how much of February would they expect to receive and when?
Yeah. So we are doing, so we are now doing all of February. And it is going to be releasing to tomorrow morning, actually. So my goal is, this is, this is new, but my goal is between like the eighteenth and twentieth of the month, and I'm releasing all of the content. I'm putting it together and Ashley, she's already shown us that, that example of like the February, like the Call of the Workbook. And so it's a PDF to where you can, you don't have to be in my Facebook page. You don't have to be like on the work session or watching my video, though I am providing a video walkthrough of it. But you can just have that PDF that's delivered to you. And so you can just click through it under, you know, like, you know, it's like ten pages or so. Click through it, see the visuals, see how it's laid out. And so I give you the, the visual of the content about mid-month, the month before, mid, you know, about eighteen to twenty days into the month, the month before, and you get everything. And that way you can see it. And you can say, okay, I love this about February, but I'm actually gonna save that one for maybe March, or I'm gonna just do it all now. And you know, you can just see it and you can use it. It's an incredible value. So even if you're like, you know what, I'm, I'm not doing Instagram stories. You know what? I'm gonna delete this one part of that. I'm not gonna use it. It's just, it's a really incredible value. So I think that, I think that for anyone, no matter which parts of it you use, certainly if you use all of it, it will be that much more value, but it's still, it's getting incredible value for anyone. And I just love that with Get Oil Link between the Vault pages and the email. I mean, you guys, I mean, it's, it's the, it's the easiest way that I've, that I've, that I've seen just to click it and it's there. Click your link and it's there. So I deliver the links to you over text. So I will email you the PDF. That will come over email, but I text you directly. So when you sign up in my website, you give me your, your phone number. And if you use whatever, if you use a texting service like Get Oil Link or whatever, that's, that's great to use, or it can be your personal phone number. But I will put you on my, on my tag that I use for Modern Campaign. And I text you and I just say, here's your link. Here's, here's a Dropbox story. Excuse me, a Dropbox, Dropbox link to all the Instagram stories. These are for personal use only. They're not for sharing for team, for team members. But what I love especially about now that I include the Instagram stories with it, you know, Instagram stories, that they're a great, great thing for your team members to, to see you using and for them to start using. And just, it's just such an easy, simple way to kind of just dip your toe into being a little more intentional about prospecting and using social media and all that, all that good stuff too. So.
Awesome. Okay, so there's a couple of questions here, and I wanted to cover them with this, this screen share here real quick. So Myrna says, I love Jen's heart-centered verbiage. That is what you are known for. She says, I've been using Modern Campaign content on Instagram and texting, wanting to start using it and Get Oil Link, because you show us how to access it and Get Oil Link. So with Get Oil Link, because I assume if you've been using it for text previously, you were using Project Broadcast. So you would want to make sure that you set up your texting with Get Oil Link. And so when you are logged in, you're gonna click this little chat button and you can set up your number. If you want to port your number over from another service, just reach out to our team. And we can help you get that done if you want to retain the same number that you were using previously. But when you get your bundle link for Get Oil Link, you're going to click it from your Modern Campaign content. And you're gonna see that you have email, but also text, right? So there are campaigns here. And those are all usable for this purpose. So, so that's how you do it. You actually, you click the resource bundle link that Jen sends you. And then it's gonna take you to a resource bundle page where you claim it. And Sherry had a question as well to this end. So, so there's a Dropbox bundle that has images that you upload to your own social media profile. That's gonna be different from Get Oil Link, because we're not your social media platform or, or a hosting service for your photos and things like that for your social media. So you would be putting them into different places. So anything that's going to get emailed or texted out, that's going to be received through your Good Oil Link account via a resource bundle link. Otherwise, where you see for instance, a Dropbox link for the campaign graphics and the Instagram stories, this is just simply a place where Jen is storing images that you can then go and utilize and put into different places. Just want to make sure that you could see that and get that answer there for both you guys. There's a question here about US versus Canadian content. So can you tell us a little bit about how you have this set up and whether maybe someone in Canada would be able to utilize this content and how?
Yeah, I would love to see, I'm trying to look for, see if I could see that question. So I don't see it. But so currently, and actually, up until this point, my content has been, it's only for US users. So if anyone in here is very familiar, I'm like to a little plug. I'm like, if you are super familiar with, I would love to work with someone who is very familiar with the Canadian side of things and compliance and things like that. So up until this point, I've done US only, but I would definitely love to talk about possibly, you know, collaborating with somebody on the, on the, who is familiar with the Canadian side of things. I'm sorry, I'm not taking advantage of your audience for a minute, because people have asked me about that, you know, several times, as well as other markets. So anyways, but currently, it's, it's US only content.
And I, and I've seen this be the case for folks in other markets and using different content providers in the past. What you would be doing, obviously with the exception of, of instances where the literal product looks different, right? In many cases, you could still make some slight modifications to the content that Jen has created and have it be usable in your market. So I would encourage you to give it a shot. The classic collection, it's, it's fifteen bucks US per month. You could just go ahead and get started. And, and give it a shot, see how it works for you. And then of course, if you are someone who's in a market where you believe that this would be really well received. Jen, how can folks reach out to you with questions like that and others?
Absolutely. So I would love to answer any more questions or to hop on the phone with anyone and just kind of chat through some things. My email is a great way to get in touch, or if you, if you follow me on social media, my, my Modern Campaign Instagram is also a great way. It's at modern underscore companion is my, is my Instagram, or you can, I have a, my Facebook group. I should have, I should have, well, never mind. But I can put that in the, in the chat. But my Facebook group is a, is an open group. It's free for anyone to join. The first couple of years I did Modern Campaign, that was partially where I would share, you know, paid content. And so it was closed for only for people who are in there. But now, now that I have my website and hosting all like past content for people in there and all the resources that I provide that way, I've invested in that. And now I have the Facebook group open and it's just a really great thriving community for anyone who, I think it's so important for Young Living brand partners just to be in Facebook communities that are that are just, you know, life-giving and just supportive of what we are all collectively trying to do together. And so I've worked to kind of evolve my Modern Campaign Facebook group that way. So I'm in there, or you can email me. Jen dot modern companion at gmail dot com. Jen dot modern companion campaigns at gmail dot com.
Oh, we, before, before we forget, and also I want to honor, there's folks who are patiently waiting, one of whom is like two thirty AM for her. So I want to make sure we get into these reviews. So Jen, how, what, what is the, the special code that you're sharing with folks today? And what does it do for them?
Yes. So I've got a code that I created for you guys today. It expires in one week. It's for twenty percent off your first month, and you can use it for the Diamond Collection. So if you want to grab some Get Oil Link Vault pages, you can use it for Diamond Collection. That's the Get Oil Link Vault. And it's updated monthly. So anyways, you can use it for that or for the Classic Collection. So Classic Collection is, again, this is the coupon or the discount code is for twenty percent off the first month of either the Classic Collection and/or the Diamond Collection. And so just use the code GETOILING23. And it will be live for one week. So I think it expires, you know, this time next week. But GETOILING23 is is a code. Yeah, thank you, Greg. Keep it in the chat.
Awesome. Thank you. If you're able to, Jen, if you could hop into the Q and A, there's a couple of questions that are there specific for you. And I'm going to bring out Anika out to chat about what she's looking for help with today. So if you, if you're able to go and type in answers to those, that would be awesome.
I will do that. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for being here.
Absolutely. It's so fun. And I'll be around if anybody has any questions to chat. Thank you.
Awesome. All right. Anika, thank you for your patience, and I hope that you are awake enough this hour.
How are you?
Thank you. Good. Yeah, I'm glad that I was able to to make it. I wasn't clear. I was like, I guess I should just hop on at two thirty.
Yeah, yeah, definitely the right move here.
Yeah, it's, it's a little early here in Japan, so.
Yeah. All right. So, so you've got several businesses that you've got on your website. You've got a lot of cool stuff going on. I know that there was one issue that you mentioned about doubling content, which I think is tied to a known bug that we are currently investigating and trying to work out. So we'll definitely address that. And then there's also, you mentioned some pages, the header goes away. So if we want to kind of get into your more technical questions, we can get those out of the way. And then, you know, talking more strategically, I think you had some interest in talking about that kind of stuff as well. So could you tell me, because I'm in your account right now, what would be an instance of a page where you see the, 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 what, like the header or the menu going away?
So I wasn't sure if it was how I had the pages in the setting. Because I, I think I noticed it in like the instructor's training page. And I was like, maybe it's just because I'm viewing it live while I'm building it and I'm not actually like viewing it, you know, by typing it in. So you can see there when you see it. I, I'm like, okay, if I was on there, like, how would people go back to, okay? And so that's where I was confused, like how, because I had a defaulted header with menu. And it would show the same thing. So I was like, well, maybe it needs to be defaulted to the actual page. And so I played with that and to make a difference.
Okay, so this, and Greg, I might need your ears on this, or your eyes on this. This show header, the custom header, that's just like a footer, right? Like where you create a page that is a, just a header for whatever website, right? Okay, so.
It is. It doesn't have like the built-in menu on it if you pick another page, but you know, you could make your own out of links or whatever if you wanted to do that.
Got you. All right. So basically what that means is, is if you, the default header is gonna be like, you know, your menu. Right? Default header is just your regular website menu that you set up. Let me open up a new page here. Your default, it's, it's what you set up over here under menu, under your website. So that's gonna be your default. Now, you do have the option similar to creating multiple custom footers to have, you know, sort of like here, I'll, I'll show you just an example. If you wanted to create a, well, I think we're maxed out. So I'll, I'll show you one example. If you want to have a, a custom menu for maybe your coaching offerings, and it's only gonna show up on your pages where you offer coaching, or maybe like if you have Young Living pages or something like that, we put a header in here. And maybe this one. And then we'll have, let me make our text a bit smaller here. And then in this case, we could maybe do a, you know, a work with me. We could do a learn more about oils. And we could do one about member area. We'll just, we'll just say, so work with me. I'm gonna make that a link and insert that. And then we're gonna change the style to a button. We'll do the same here. And, and then this would basically be something like just this section up here at the top. Once it's done, this could be inserted as the header for whatever page you choose when you're inside of your settings, right? And so if you want just your regular website menu to show up in the header, just choose default. Because if you're using this page, which I think you were using this page as its own header, that's gonna basically paste all of this page on top of the content of all of this page. So that is gonna kind of show a duplicate page, right? Is, is that right, Greg? Does that make sense?
Yeah, you wouldn't want to pick your own page. Yeah, yep, yeah.
Okay. So it's basically gonna show your page and then your page, because you've told, you've told the website to display this whole, everything that you have as this page, as the header for the page. Yeah. So unless you want to create custom, you know, headers like this guy right here, that, again, it would just be its own thing. It's like creating a custom footer. Then you would just want to keep the default header.
Okay.
And you set the default footer in your, your page, sorry, your, let me go back and find that. You, you set your default footer over here in your customize my site on this page.
I think that, that.
This, okay. So in this case, yeah, you, you're, you're a basic plan, right? Yeah. So.
And I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm starting something that I need to upgrade to the next plan, just because I also noticed since I maxed out my pages, that I can't actually create any content in my vault. Because it requires a page, you know, so I created the vault, but I don't have any pages. So it doesn't really make any sense for me to have a vault yet, because I can't create content. So I, I I'm just kind of dealing with getting the information up there. So I'm not losing leads, whether it's through the Young Living side or through my other businesses. And so that makes sense, what you're saying, because there's, I think it's been, if you look at it from a building standpoint on the the Fat Mermaid's page, it, I kept, and so that was the other thing, because sort of that top part, you can't see it, because I had it hidden. I kept it because I was like, I don't know what this is for, but I'm pretty sure it's something important. I'm just gonna keep it until I figure out what, how people use this. And so that, that makes sense. That makes.
Yeah. So if, if you wanted to use this in lieu of your standard built-in, your regular default website header, you would just go, you would choose to not show the header. And then what you would have is just what you have here on the page. But what, you know, if you wanted to use whatever you format here on other pages, then what you would want to do is create a new page, have just this be the content of that page. And now you're able to use that as a header on whatever pages you want to. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, awesome.
Help.
Awesome. I do want to touch on one thing that, and I'm not sure, I think I might have seen it on one of your pages. But there is one. Um but there is one sort of little bug that we've caught, uh I guess we could call it. Uh when the system is sort of refreshing or updating itself, it happens at about midnight Central Time US. That's going to be about three in the afternoon. Japan time. And um and if you are trying to save a page, um and it's not saving. Just leave it for fifteen minutes, I think is is what Colin said when he was trying to uh explain how this worked, uh where we've run into this in the past. So um so give it about fifteen minutes. Uh just don't like keep trying to save, because every time you save, it's going to copy your page onto your page. And just like give you a whole bunch of stuff you need to delete.
Yeah, normally um just because I have um a new baby. I'm actually on Get Living, trying to build my site at like midnight, you know, one in the morning. So it.
Okay.
Didn't really affect me, but yeah.
Okay, cool.
That that is just helpful information for me to have in case I run into it in the future.
Yeah, it and knowing now that you are using a page for its own header, that's probably what you're experiencing. But just in case you're seeing that duplication in the builder, that could be it if you're doing that in the afternoon.
So if all the ones that I have it to the page, I go ahead and click back to the default to the header, it should remove that doubling of the. Content itself.
That's right. Yeah, yeah. So we'll just, we'll go into home here. And yeah, the, we're just going to go to default header with menu and save that. And then when we go look at home. We've got our great menu here. And then, of course, uh it's just this one page. It doesn't repeat itself.
Okay. Um and then I also know that, so that explains, I guess, kind of the same question I had with regards to like. When I'm on the other pages, like um whichever one uh I was like, how come I can't see? Home in the menu. Um like the actual homepage, if they wanted to go back to the very first one. So like click on like just wellness or something, it it doesn't really matter um and go to like a page. Of like, not that page, go to like an actual page I built. Maybe that one, I don't know. Okay, maybe I'm true.
I think you got it. Um so you do, you do have home included here in the menu now. I think that's something that you may have updated at some point. But another important thing to know, and this is going to be true of majority of developed websites, home isn't really always in a menu like this. You don't necessarily have to have it because the majority of the time when you click your logo, it's going to take you home.
That's okay, yeah. So because originally I was like, click the logo maybe. And now I was like, well, will people intuitively know to click on the. Icon to go back to the home button. So I wasn't sure if I should take it away after my husband was playing. I was like, play with my website. And he's like, why can't I go back? And I was like, click on the logo and we figured it out. Um and you're right, I I I guess I fixed it myself, but I wasn't really sure if most people don't have that home button.
It's, yeah, it's not, it's a little bit redundant. However, there's no harm in keeping it. Like, it it's not going to hurt anything for you to have it. If you feel like it would be supportive, then that's, you know, then have it there.
Okay. Um and then I guess the last one was for the built-in. You know, themed pages. It has the automated um lead. And so I kind of was confused when it was saying, you know, push hashtag lead when you want whatever. And I was like, well, I don't really understand what it's asking me to do. And I'm assuming that anytime there's a button or whatever. And I'm editing the link, it automatically has a hashtag button that's blank. And I was like, is this where I'm supposed to be putting the lead?
Okay, yeah. So this um, the only things that you're really going to want to do with your your built-in themes. Is to put your story and photo in here, which you've done and it's great, right? So this is, this is what needs to be here. You don't need to put on the built-in themes any like hashtag lead, like actually that's not going to work on the built-in themes. The only um hashtag URL that's going to work uh is going to be the contact button, which is there already for you. You don't have to code that or or create that. If you wanted to put a link inside of this, uh you know, my story and photo section. You could, if you wanted to even put a button with a link that maybe went to an about me page on your website or to different offerings that you have, you could certainly do that. Um but the hashtag lead as a URL um is only going to work on pages in Get Oiling.
Okay.
Because that's going to pop up a lead form for you. And there is, I will, we'll show you one other thing on Customize My Site. If you wanted to add, um you can go down here to Customize Built-In Theme. Um when you upgrade your plan, there is a custom section that you could add additional information to if you wanted to. Uh but you could just stick with the my story and photo and you're good to go. And you don't have to worry about anything else there.
So anytime I see that just hashtag, that's what's going to go back to that, which you just showed me the my story.
Yeah, so if we go to, what would be the best way, Greg, I don't remember how to do this. If I want to go to a built-in theme, do you know what the slug would be here?
Oh, I don't know that offhand.
Okay.
Relatively complicated.
All right, so I'm I'm just going to go create a leg builder link for you real quick, just so we can cheat code this. So um this is going to be um. Uh body systems and create link. Okay, so when we view this, this is reviewing your built-in theme. It's got your whole custom menu in here. Uh and of course, you know, you've got the images that you could scroll through, et cetera. Here's the image of you on the side. It's got all of the stuff that you put into my story and photo. And this contact me, again, this is here automatically. You don't have to do anything. And it's just going to pop this up and give people the opportunity to get in touch with you. Right? And then the rest of it is just the built-in theme. So um so yeah, there's there's nothing else that really needs to be done with this. You've already got your Young Living member number input. So if somebody were to, you know, click one of these product links, for instance, it's going to go off to Young Living. Where they could purchase and the the purchase is coded to you. And of course, if they want to get in touch, they can just hit this contact me button right here. So um yeah, that's not something that you really have to worry about at all. If you want to kind of utilize these different built-in themes. Um you know, as sort of like a way for somebody to choose, oh, I want to learn about babies. I want to learn about kids. I want to learn about oils and pets, et cetera. Give the Brand My Business Workshop a a spin. You're going to see themes in, or not themes, sorry. You're going to see uh templates inside of that program. And it's all, it's all free. Um you'll see templates inside of there, one of which is a Why Young Living page template that will actually link to all of your different themes in one place. Um and all you really want to do is just, you know, change out some, you know, pictures, colors, whatever to to make it you. Um and then you can be utilizing this as as a sharing tool, I think, uh more more easily.
Okay, yeah, because I I just started building this website, I think, in the beginning of the year. And so I've been watching a bunch of your replays. Greg's been really helpful and supportive on the Facebook. Because I just felt like every replay was like a rabbit hole of like more resources. I was like, oh my gosh, I created the links page. Coming from one of your replays, which was really awesome, and replaced um what I was using. So on my Instagram for that. And yeah, it it's, the replays are amazing, but it's just so much information. And I was like, I just, I think I just need to finish building my last webpage and then go through your masters. The marketing masters.
That's what I would recommend for sure.
Yeah, because then then, but uh when I was started it, um a lot of it was geared towards the next. You know, the next um website, like um. Um the upgrade to the membership, um like the fonts and the way and the the stuff was like, I don't, I think I have access to that in the basic plan. So um it's on my to-do list. I just figured um the month is almost over. And let me just get the system up since it's out live. And then um I will deal with that so that I can focus on the vault later on.
Yeah.
Fine tune what what's there. But it's, it's an amazing product, a platform. I switched over. I just canceled my um my other one so that I could, you know, just pay for yours. Um and the campaigns themselves were like way worth it. I was like, okay, this is where I've been struggling. And you guys really brought it all together in one product. And it's been amazing. And I'm sad that. No one ever told me about Get Oiling a year ago when I joined Young Living, because I feel like I really would have been a lot further along in. My own growth, but.
Well, we're honored to have you here. And um and I will say this, I I think this is important to know. If you go into my account settings, and this is true for everybody who's watching this right now, and you scroll down to the Marketing Mastery Workshop. I would encourage you to just go ahead and get started with that. Um one important distinction in the training and in the stuff that I go through in here. You can be at any plan level and get oiling and execute what I'm talking about. There are simple, simple, like use the built-in themes. Like literally any plan level and get oiling, you can do this. And then there are optimized, which is really, it's something you work toward. Done is better than perfect. And so uh we did just have our first um live workshop yesterday. Definitely worth watching. Like definitely, just for perspective, um especially if if you, you know, ever feel kind of overwhelmed or like you fall down rabbit holes. Um I I think it's, it's a good way to kind of set your head on straight and um where this stuff is concerned. And help you see really the big picture of of the how to work. Uh while not getting yourself too caught up or um or stuck in um, you know. Web designy stuff when your business might need other things from you, right? So um to, I I would definitely recommend giving, giving that a spin.
Okay, awesome.
Yeah.
I will, I will try to put that replay on my watch list on the YouTube and go from there. That was, that that helped answer a lot of the little questions that I can kind of move forward from though. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. And I thank you for for being here with us. I know it's really late for you. All right, take care.
Bye.
Bye. All right. I also have here, I hope you're still here, and thank you for your patience. Uh Mary Ness, are you here? You are here. Hello. How can we help? Hi.
Hi, um I appreciate you taking the time to look it over.
Yeah, what are we looking at today?
Um my website, please.
Okay, awesome. Yeah, let's go take a look. Ooh, it's so clean and poppy. I love it. Okay, fantastic.
So so far, I've been trying to use mostly get, get only mostly for my newsletter and things. And before I just threw some pictures in my website, but um since the beginning of the year, I've been trying to focus more on what I want to do with it. And um I wanted you guys to take a look and let me know if I'm accomplishing what I set out to do, which is what you just said. I'm glad you just said it, to have a clean look and simple and easy to find.
This is.
This, I haven't um developed my bat signal for use of um Martha's term. Yet, but I just wanted to put together the website first and then concentrate on doing that.
This is fantastic. You've, you have done an amazing job. This is, this is fantastic. You're nailing this. It looks really good. It's easy to navigate. Um it's easy to see. Oh, what's that? Did we? Oh, shop Young Living. Yeah, it goes straight to Young Living. Perfect. Uh business, leaving a legacy. That goes off to a sway. So one thing that I would recommend where you have something like this uh is to create a page in your Get Oiling and embed the sway on the page. So that you're not sending them away from your website. Because, you know, when they're here, they're just here. And then where do they go?
Yes, that was one of my question. It happens when I have a PDF as well, that I kind of lose them. So one of my question was, for example, in the ninja red um uh button, when they go to my ninja red, I put them into a PDF. And then I lose them. So how can I find something that I cannot embed into ninja? Their ninja red PDF itself to bring them back?
Yeah, so a PDF generally, there are ways to use like an embeddable PDF viewer to put onto a page. Uh but generally speaking, it kind of depends on why you're giving the PDF away, right? So if you're trying, if this is to get a lead, then you want to just send that PDF via email, right? Um and then ideally, if you've created the PDF, maybe there's a link back to your website on the PDF itself. If it's a third-party PDF. Um then that may even be something that's ideal to put inside your member area where that's a download, right? Where they can click and open a download. If you have like a an area just serving your your customers. Um but but yeah, generally speaking, um where you're offering a PDF, you want to make sure that the setting for the the link, when you're actually linking to it. Opens it in a new tab. And so that way they're not losing your website when they.
Okay, and that's what I have right now. Actually, I have in um, I got, I have the lead capture already and then they get the PDF.
Okay, perfect.
I think so.
Yeah, that's, that's great. So yeah, just make sure that you're sending an email campaign out that's like talking about the PDF, reminding them to come back to your website or take whatever action it is. Obviously, if they want the PDF and they know they're getting it from you. And even ideally, of course, if the PDF is yours and it has your brand on it, it has a link to your website on it, then there's really nothing to to worry about there. Um but like for that uh that sway, which is potentially maybe like a grow workspace one or something like that. You could use that in theory, if you edit the sway and you put your website information on it. Um but it's going to, just as a user experience uh on your website, it's going to be better to have something that is. And that that's embedded, that they can scroll through and not leave your website to uh to partake in. For a PDF, you can literally say, you know, click here to get the PDF. It'll open in a new window. And now you've set the expectations correctly. And and the, you know, the the experience is as it, as it should be.
Okay.
You're doing great work. This is awesome.
Thank you, thank you. Um so some of the questions I have, may I?
Yeah.
Okay, I had, um it goes back to what you were just discussing with the previous caller. I would like to use some of the built-in themes and try that, but for some reason, um some other content is coming up. And I think I have a boo-boo somewhere.
Okay.
So if you go back to my menu.
Yeah, let's go. Oh, wait, this is, oh, here we go. You've got a menu and and you're, you've basically replicated your website in Spanish, which is great.
Um yeah, we're. Another question I have later on, but first this one, under learn.
Uh huh.
If you go to like, for example, healthy homes or kids or pets. Okay, so my picture comes up. I don't know where that's coming from. And if you scroll down.
Here, this um. Let me go find, here we go.
See, that all shows up, but if you keep going, the actual template comes up. I don't know why all that.
Oh, so you know, there are settings for this. Okay, so there's, this is where the built-in theme starts. So you actually have, um these are all adjustable, right? And this is really great. You don't have to have this photo here. But um I think it's, is it carousel? How do I type this in? Here we go, customize the built-in website theme. Here we go. You've got these photos here and these are all going to show up. Um so this, this shows up there because you have it right here under Customize My Site and you customized your website uh photos. And this is just for the top carousel here, because if we scroll through, you'll see there's that next one right here, right? So that's where those are. And you can keep them or not. I think they look nice. I think you've done a nice job with them.
Thank you. It's not intended to be showing up in there. Actually, that is a big mistake. So.
Okay, yeah. So what you could do is is you you could just delete these. And uh and then the, you know, the ones that are supposed to be there for that particular theme will uh will just be there if you remove the ones that you've added.
Okay, so that was the issue there. Thank you so much. And then my issue that I don't know how to do is that whenever I have a um. Landing page or a confirmation page come up, there's checkbox to the left, lower left-hand corner that.
Uh huh.
I can't get rid of. I don't know where to go to get rid of it when I.
So all of the landing pages have that checkbox. And if you want to not have a checkbox there. Uh then what you're going to want to do is just sort of replicate something similar using a page. You have a lot more design control uh with pages. And landing pages are really meant to be um very simple, straightforward. And they're not super, super customizable, especially with code changes, like uh, you know, removing a checkbox and that kind of thing.
Okay, so that was another question I had. When do you recommend using a landing page versus a confirmation page? And I was kind of confused on that. So I could create my own uh anytime I want.
That's right. Yeah, so if 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 you really want to have a lot of control over uh how it looks, how it behaves. Uh and you know, whether or not, for instance, it has a checkbox there, uh then then you, of course, would want to use pages. So where you really want to fine tune the design, use pages. If you're trying to get something done quick and easy, use landing pages. Because that's, it's already done for you. You're basically swapping out some. use landing pages cuz that's, it's already done for you. You're basically swapping out some words in an image and telling it where to go and you're done. Another reason that you might wanna use a landing page and you can use, you can set up a page to do this as well, uh but it's easier uh is um is if you are going to be at an in-person event and you have a device that's out for people to maybe sign up for your newsletter or for a giveaway or something like that. The kiosk mode on landing pages is gonna be great for that. Another reason to use landing pages would be if you want to automatically show your my story and photo information uh on your um on your landing pages, you know, you you would have to actually manually add those sections to pages if you wanted it to show up that way. Uh but that's something that's, it's really kind of a set it and forget it. And if you're not super tech-inclined or feel very comfortable with design, it's just a really great option uh to get that function handled uh quickly and easily. I do wanna show you one thing really quick, though. Um on your my story and photo, you noticed on the built-in themes where all of your events were showing up. There's a couple of things that that I wanted to point out to you here uh that should be helpful to you. And that's gonna be in your my story and photo. This is where you can actually choose where your story and photo show up. Um in this case, or sorry, it's your events, right? Rather, it's it's where whether you want your events to show up on your built-in themes. That's gonna be, Greg, where do we do that? Um is that a blog thing or?
I think that's actually under, yeah, the blog settings. If you go to blog, blog post, then there's a setting button there, yeah.
There we go. So this is gonna be, I believe it's under, yeah, it's under advanced options here. Here we go. Um max events to show on built-in theme and events list, right? So you can actually show fewer of those if you want to. You can show up to ten. So if you tend to have a lot of them, I would maybe take it down to two or three. Right? Uh and that way, again, you know, if somebody arrives at your website, they see who you are. They see you've got events coming up that they may wanna take advantage of. And then, of course, um they can scroll through and see the rest of the information.
Okay, so basically just gives in a preview.
Yes, yeah, and they and then they could always, of course, go to the events page on your website and, you know, scroll through the whole list of everything that you've got.
Right, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, I do have another question.
Okay.
Um because you guys are so resourceful and you have so many ideas. Can you go to my um Spanish um page, please?
Yeah.
And um I am trying to incorporate almost like another whole um website in there. And so what I did was I did what you just mentioned to the caller before. I did a menu on my own. But when I do that, then I don't have the ability to stare if for back, I don't know if that makes sense.
Right, a a dropdown menu from from days. Yeah.
They just click on something and then that's it. If you can come up with any ideas for me of how I can um set that up, that would be awesome.
Yeah, so um we don't have the ability outside of some really clever coding on your part to uh to to create something uh like a two separate menus. Uh we currently have one site menu for the whole site that has that dropdown capability. That said, what I would do is, let's just say, for instance, they uh click this essential oils page. You go to that next page and then maybe you have topic, 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 topic. Maybe there's an image and then there's a link to wherever it goes. So it's almost like the dropdown menu is sort of like a bridge page uh where they can go and, you know, pick the different thing they wanna learn about and go to that place. Okay, which is, yeah, it's kind of similar to, let's just say, for instance, you wanted to have, like, if you do a lot of different things, you offer a lot of things in your business and you wanted to have a work with me page. And that work with me page is sort of a preview of I speak, I train, I coach, uh I consult on wellness. Uh and then they could click any of those things and then go to a page that talks about those things or sells those things or what have you. And that's that's sort of what I would I would recommend in a case like this.
So a sub-menu, it would be like a sub-menu within a page.
As a page, that's correct. Yeah.
Because right now what I'm doing is just referring them to, for example, the um essential oils one would go directly to Young Living and that way they can go to different topics uh within that page. Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Yeah.
Let's see, what else did I have? Oh, a separate question from this. Is there any way for me to capture leads in my Zoom with the one that I use it through Get Oiling um whenever I have a meeting?
Hmm, I don't believe so because um with Get Oiling, you don't have to grab uh you 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 aren't obtaining their email address in order for them to join the call. So um what I would do is if you want somebody to sign up for a call, like if you wanna have a Zoom and you want to collect uh the leads information, use a landing page or a page. And then they don't, uh they obviously they register for the call on that page and then they don't get the link to the call without registering first.
Okay, which is what I basically ended ended up doing with the register uh prompt that you have for the events. But they have to go. So I just have to refer them to the website to register through the event so that I can get their email.
Yeah, that's right. So instead of just sending somebody a Zoom link, you have to have them perform one step so that they um can get tagged uh or could have the campaign. Um it's it's typically, especially where you start thinking about operating at scale, it's gonna be um a a more useful way for you to go about doing things anyway, because that way you're already going to know who is for what call. Um they're gonna get the reminder email maybe automatically. Uh you don't have to worry about sending them anything because maybe you've got a campaign attached that sends them not only the link to the Zoom, but also any other details, follow-ups, that kind of thing.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks for coming out. Glad we could help and thank you for everybody sticking around who is just, you know, you guys are just committed to learn and we love that about you. So um there are just a couple of questions here. So um I don't think we have a past newsletter pulled up, Allison, that that we would be able to show, but they're not going to be wholly dissimilar from some of the stuff that uh that I showed you guys in the slides here. Highly recommend you use that code GETOILING23, get twenty percent off that first month. And uh what you're gonna find in there is, man, it's the amount of 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 money you're paying for the stuff that you're getting is is kind of mind-blowing and you there's stuff that you could use for years in there. It's incredible. So highly recommend you just happen and give it a shot. Um Lisa says, I have the same question as Sherry, must have missed the answer. Would you need to purchase Classic Collection and Simple Email separately in order to have emails as well? Uh what you wanna do is just get the Classic Collection cuz that's got your email and text. I think that the um the the other option is like a just email thing. It doesn't have all the all the cool stuff. What we're recommending is that you go for Classic Collection and if you're doing vaults, um add on that diamond uh collection as well. Thank you for your question. Um can we use the content for classes, newsletter, prospects, customers, brand partners, et cetera? Camille, your question about the content. Um I'll go ahead and grab this. Uh you have the ability to repurpose content in any direction that you want to. Um most of the content from Modern Companion you're going to see is is really intended to serve your customers, although there are some pieces of content that are in uh in her content that that you'll find that are friendly to prospecting, right? So uh if you want my notes on Ningsha, right, I'm gonna send you my notes on Ningsha. You could use, if you wanted to read, so for instance, that digestive reset. Um that's a, that's a, I think a two-part email series, but the emails are huge and there's lots of great information. Yeah, why not repurpose that information into a class if you wanted to, right? Uh so but but obviously importantly, make sure that the only thing that you don't do with this content uh is give it away, right? Because it's yours. Uh and so uh make sure that you um put that to use in any way that you love to share uh and educate and teach and grow your business. And uh yeah, thank you for sticking around today. We so appreciate you. Um Jen says, yes, a classic collection has a Get Oiling email included. The other email, the option that she offers is not necessary. So you wanna get the classic collection. And if you're doing vaults and you want some pages, you wanna add that diamond one on. Uh again, highly recommend you guys give that a shot. Uh excuse me, her February content is dropping tomorrow. We will be back here next week. If you have not done so already, please give yourself the gift of sitting down sometime within the next few days, log into your Good Oil account, go to your account settings, look for the Marketing Mastery Workshop, watch the first workshop. Do that for yourself this week. If you are in the comments here and you've done that, you were live yesterday or you've watched it, let everybody know why they need to. Uh if you are looking for a way to kind of really zone in, get yourself right for this year and into the right kind of work, really recommend you guys go and check out that replay and don't miss an upcoming workshop. We do talk about planning ahead and using content like the amazing stuff that Jen has created for you. Uh so uh it's totally free, you guys. We're not gonna sell you a new thing in there. It is, uh it's it's the whole shebang solution for you, teaching you how to ha- use what you have to get what you want. So we thank you guys for your time and attention and for being such incredible people uh being a part of this community. We look forward to seeing you next week on the call. Thanks again to Jen uh for all of your time today and for serving this community so well. We appreciate you guys and uh we will see you next week. Bye.